...
Meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. We got some troublemakers out there like Ruth Smith in the crowd, so. How you doing? Thanks for being here, it's good to see you. Welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightigum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil. Councilmember Tu Hau Wynn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Wynn.
Here.
Mayor Potem Klavenstein.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. I'd like to ask Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation and then Councilmember Brightigum to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance as we meet this evening to conduct business for our city government. Please help us to keep in mind, we are here to serve the people and enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Grant that in serving our community, we may also honor you. Amen.
Please face the flag, hand over heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple presentations and we actually have a couple consent items that pertain to those proclamations that go. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to first start with housing authority, so I'll actually defer over to the Housing Authority President.
Sure, we now convene the Housing Authority for September 25th. At this time, I'd like to bring up oral communication. Is there anyone who speaks to the Housing Authority at this moment? Since none, I now close the oral communication.
Chair Bowie, can we take real call for the Housing Authority, please?
Oh, yes, of course, I forgot, but, Maran, please, real call.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Brightigum.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klavenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tu Hau Wynn.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil is absent. Commissioner Solario.
Here.
And Vice Chair Kim Wynn.
Here.
And Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We just opened the community oral communication earlier and I see no one who wants to speak, so I now close oral communications. We move next to consent item, there's two items. Is there anyone who would like to take any item out? Maran, please call the vote.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Next matter from the Chair and Commission, is there anyone who would like to speak to, you know, the Commission? Since none, I now close these items and I would like now to adjourn the meetings. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 22nd and we now pass back to the City Council.
Okay, we now move on to presentations. We do have a couple of presentations and there are a couple consent items on the City Council agenda that correspond with those, so if I could, can I fast track and make a motion to approve items 3A and 3B from our consent regarding the proclamations that pertain to these two presentations? Can I get a second on those two consent items?
Second.
Thank you, call the vote.
Sorry, who was the first? Mayor and the second? All right, so we'll take the vote on 3A first. Motion received, six yes votes with Councilmember O'Neil absent and item 3B. Motion received, six yes votes with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
I'd also like to move 3C as it pertains to the council.
Do the vote on that as well.
3C, can we get a second?
Second.
Motion received, six yes votes with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
Thank you, so that takes us back to Presentations, item 1A.
I'll go ahead and start. Tonight, let's see, we have a committee spotlight, agenda item 1A is the Southland Integrated Services. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to acknowledge and celebrate the 40th anniversary of Southland Integrated Services. And do we have representatives from Southland here? If you could please come forward. Formerly known as the Vietnamese Community of Orange County, you can kind of just stand right up here at the front and we can all look at you. I know. Formerly known as the Vietnamese Community of Orange County, Southland Integrated Services was established in 1979 as a refugee resettlement support agency. A nonprofit organization, Southland Integrated Services operates a federally qualified health center with integrated health services and a comprehensive social services agency. With a multilingual medical staff and strong supportive personnel, Southland Integrated Services expanded its operations in response to the urgent health needs of the large medically underserved population in Orange County. Southland Integrated Services provides a broad range of social, public health, and cultural services, not only within Garden Grove, but within the rest of Orange County as well. On Friday, September 27th, Southland Integrated Services will celebrate their milestone 40-year anniversary at their annual fundraising gala at the Hyatt in Garden Grove. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present a proclamation honoring the 40th anniversary of Southland Integrated Services. Congratulations.
I'd like to present you with the proclamation on behalf of Garden Grove City Council. Maybe we can come right over here and take some.
One more, three, two, and one.
Thank you. Would you like, would you care to say?
First of all, I would like to, on behalf of Southland Integrated Services, supportive director, staff, we're very honored, it's a very unexpected award. Would like to thank the City of Garden Grove, we've been in the City of Garden Grove for 10 years for the health center and we're hoping to have another location in the City of Garden Grove as well in the next couple of years. We love the City of Garden Grove and we're just very honored to receive this award and, you know, hopefully, we can celebrate another 10 years when it's the 50-year gala and I hope to see everyone there 10 years later. So, thank you so much to the Mayor and all the City Councils, we're very, very blessed. Thank you.
All righty, that takes us on to 1B.
Okay, and now the Garden Grove City Council is honored to recognize four decades of exceptional service by one of the city's most regarded community partners, Acacia Adult Day Services and Wood, Acacia Executive Director and Vice President of Direct Care Services and Alzheimer's Orange County Mallory Vega, please come forward along with Les Jones, Ruth Smith, and Shirley Kellogg. You can all come forward and stand up here in the front. And I would like to mention that Les Jones is our former Assistant City Manager and Ruth Smith is our former City Clerk as well, so nice to see you both again. So, for 40 years, Acacia Adult Day Services has been serving the medical and social needs of older adults experiencing physical and cognitive disabilities, chronic health conditions, or lifelong physical impairments with services that enhance their daily quality of life. Acacia's history begins in 1976 when Dr. Miles Akner, a minister from the local United Methodist Church, introduced the concept of adult day services to a small group of parishioners. The group was looking to expand the continuum of care services and resources for seniors while remaining with their families in the community. The group proposed opening a community adult daycare program to the City of Garden Grove, who in turn obtained funding for a pilot program through the Office of Aging. Three years later, in 1979, the Garden Grove Adult Daycare Center opened its doors at the United Methodist Church on Main Street. In 1997, the center moved from Main Street to its current location on Acacia Parkway and was renamed Acacia Adult Day Services. In 2007, Acacia merged with Alzheimer's Orange County to further expand their services to Garden Grove and surrounding communities in Central and North Orange County. Today, Acacia Adult Day Services, a CalOptima pace alternate care site, serves over 100 participants with a variety of programs and services. Over its 40-year history, Acacia Adult Day Services has received numerous accolades, deserving grant awards, and formed successful and lasting partnerships with organizations such as the Orange County Transportation Authority and Scan Health. Much of Acacia's long-term success can be attributed to the enduring loyalty and dedication of the Acacia staff, in particular, Mallory and Julie Duarte, the Program Director, who have been with Acacia since its inception four decades ago, so 40 years ago, 40 years with Acacia. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to thank and present a 40th anniversary proclamation to Acacia Adult Day Services in recognition of their longstanding efforts towards enriching the lives of older adults in our community and in Orange County. Congratulations.
we do, you already explained everything. It's just a true, what?
You're good. You're good.
It's a true honor to be here with part of the individuals who made Acacia what it is, Les Jones, Ruth Smith, and Shirley Kellogg was one of the original people who worked on this project. She was one of the church members who made it a reality. And also Steve Jones, he was one of our members, board members as well. We've enjoyed a long history with Acacia, we plan on continuing to enjoy that long history and seek to do the service that we set to do as far as our mission for this organization and for this community. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, we do have a proclamation to present to Michelle and Anthony Monzo with Elks Lodge. You can please step forward.
Yeah.
I was in a wheelchair last time you seen me.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have a committee spotlight presentation for this item, but I believe we have a framed proclamation that we would like to present, recognizing National Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through October 31st. And we appreciate the Elks Lodge promoting this endeavor and we are pleased to present you with the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can get up there.
Okay.
Absolutely. You could say something worth it.
Did a while, did a while, huh? I'm bouncing up and walking around now, so.
Okay, there we go.
I just got order two.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just maybe a little heads up, we are been in the area for 62 years, we support the veterans and the needy kids in our area, we do, we have veterans programs, we are going to be going to the Garden Grove on Main Street, it's going to be having one by the end of the month, in November, veterans thing, and then we invite kids from all the community and from all the schools around here to do a kids program, for them to come see Santa Claus and then we treat them for lunch and so forth. What this is, is the Red Ribbon Week, they've been doing this for years and we just get involved and we go to all the schools and we pass out red ribbons to all the kids, all the third graders and so forth, and we do appreciate the Mayor and his team of supporting us with that information and Delina's go out there and take care of all this, the Red Ribbon Week with us. Like the Elks say, we get hugs and not drugs. The kids are our future, with us and with you guys, as well, we do need them. So, thank you very much, thank you.
All righty, thank you guys all for coming. After this, we'll now dive into kind of the business section, so if you guys want, you're welcome to clear out. Now we get into all the boring stuff. We'll take a quick minute, just if you like, yeah. I don't want you guys to get trapped and feel like you gotta hang out, yeah. All righty, we will get going again, so that ends Presentations, takes us on to Oral Communications. I do have a handful of cards, so we'll dive right in, starting with, I'm sorry, I can't read it, Anna Wong?
Sorry.
Sorry, I just can't read what it says on the card, but.
That's because I have messy writing. Honorable Mayor and esteemed Council, I am the RTF Director for Stray Cat Alliance, which is on your agenda for approval tonight for the continuing program here in the City of Garden Grove. We'd like to thank you so much for all you're doing to help the animals here in your city and I wanted to let you know directly with numbers how much the impact has just been in the 18 months since the program has been instituted with us, meaning since it left Orange County Animal Care Services and came over here. It's important to also remember that these cats only represent feral cats. In the City of Garden Grove, we do not release friendly strays, that is not because we don't want to, because we do support that, but it is because OC Humane feels they can get them adopted out, so I want to make a clear definition of what we're dealing with here. So, we have two terms here, RTF and TNR. RTF represents return to field as it applies to animal control and sheltering. TNR is trap neuter return and it represents anyone who goes out to trap, including ourselves and other trappers. When we trap those cats, in those traps can sometimes be friendly strays, sometimes they can be kittens, sometimes they can be ferals. The idea is these animals actually live out there, they've been living successfully out there. If for any reason we do not feel those animals are living successfully out there, we do not put them back out. The direct impact on RTF alone, just in 18 months, has been 536 cats. The direct impact, or I'm sorry, with RTF and TNR, has been 536 cats. If we assign to each one of those cats that if they were not fixed, two litters a year, they average two to three litters a year, with the average litter size being four, we'll say, generally it's higher, so I erred on the lower side. Just in the 18 months alone, we have directly and indirectly impacted 4,288 cats. Those are cats that will not reproduce and those are cats that just were never born, so it's huge. So, let's also talk about our private donor who has graciously helped us pull cats and kittens off the streets of Garden Grove for almost two years now. Of those, we have a rough estimate of 904 felines from our direct donor that never went back to the shelter, that never went back to the street. Of those 940, or 904 cats and kittens, 95%, 97% of those were kittens. The indirect impact for those kittens alone was 7,232, using the same math of two litters a year, four kittens per litter. If I add all the direct and indirect together, 7,232, 4,288, 904, 536, the direct and indirect impact for 18 months in the City of Garden Grove with Stray Cat Alliance's help has been 12,960 cats. Thank you for allowing this program to come back. Thank you for allowing it to be here. We hope we're going to be able to bring the TNR component back. You guys are setting precedence for the nation in being progressive in your animal treatment.
I actually got a haircut yesterday, so summer is over with. First of all, I'd like to start off, I like to see a five-minute clock right away for anybody that comes up here and talks, because right now, it only starts off at 22 seconds and counts down, so it should start off with five-minute clock, so it's fair for everybody. Measure O, that's for public safety, police, fire department, and safety on walking on public sidewalks. I respect and like Bill Murray, and we talked shortly before this meeting here, there's issues on Valley View and the most likely issues in all other cities in Garden Grove, that the trees are actually up to eight feet above the telephone lines, but yet below the electrical lines. What does it have to do with sidewalks? Leaves come down, people could slip and fall. That needs to be addressed. Also with Mr., with Measure Zero, we're supposed to have more police officers. Believe it or not, I called the police today for two illegally parked vehicles on limited time on Tiffany and one parked in front of a fire hydrant. I called back politely two hours later and I was told, they're busy. So, what is busy for two hours that they can't come by, view the issue with the license plate that I did give to them for all three vehicles? Two hours, that's not acceptable. We are now under the authority and I think Garden Grove is a pond. So, we got Buena Park on one side and we got Westminster and Seal Beach on the other. We all know where I live, I live on Valley View. And I gotta tell you, since I was there for five years to take care of my mom, I never heard a fire engine go across the bridge to Westminster or Seal Beach. Now I hear it four or five times a day. I did go to the authority and I did talk to them and they basically told me, our contract, we can pick and pull from whatever station. So, the question is, the $25 million that we're paying for this first year only, and don't forget, this first year was actually a short year, who's paying for the gas? Who's paying for the time? Is there check and balance? For example, at the end of the month, we had how many man-hours, how many rigs that go to other cities? I tell you one thing, I've never heard of a fire engine coming from the other side to our side. And so that's about Measure Zero, or O. I'm not going to get into the PUDs and the SPAs on Tiffany and Bailey right now, where I'm doing that on the side right now still, but if I don't have my information by the next meeting, I'll be bringing that up. Thank you, just so you know, I just start my clock and I still got an hour, a minute and a half left, so thanks a lot for not showing, but I appreciate it if you guys start the five-minute clocks, because that would help everybody out, because I'm telling you, I've never, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So, my name is Cynthia Plager. I'm here tonight to discuss my experience with Stray Cat Alliance, Anna had already explained to you all the TNR and stuff, and basically, an elderly friend of mine lives in a mobile home park in Garden Grove, and she called me in tears one day and said she doesn't know what to do because there's kittens and cats everywhere and it was breaking her heart. So, I went out there and saw the situation myself, it was pretty bad, and then I called around, I was able to connect with. And then I called around, I was able to connect with Stray Cat Alliance. They came out shortly thereafter, and they implemented their TNR program. Uh, I would say probably at least twenty to thirty cats. Uh, they, there were several kittens, they were able to get into their rescue program. And I just, I saw absolute wonderful results. Since then, some, I guess, there's been some issues in the situation. I'm hoping that they'll be able to get back out there because it's gotten bad again. And that's because they're not there and able to do their job. But the residents there were very grateful and very happy, and they're all animal lovers, and they were tired of seeing these kittens dying and all this stuff that was going on. And I just, I'm very impressed with them and their professionalism and their wonderful programs, and it's my hope that they're able to return and continue the great work that they do there. And I truly love what they stand for. Thank you very much.
Lala Trang.
Good evening. Someone filled out a card for me, I didn't know I was coming up here. But, um, thank you for, um, you know, the support and the funds and the help that you have devoted to the stray animals out there, the cats. There's a lot of cats in Garden Grove. And for the people that understand, are blessed to get to know the cat, because it's not familiar to every culture, it changed, it changed my life. And, um, so there are so many cats. Um, I mean, every business area has cats. Target, 76th Station, because they come from the adjacent residential area. And so, trapping is the number one, uh, you know, crucial thing to do, is fixing them. Secondly is education, because I'm feeding thirty from a household off of Chapman and West that abandoned them. Off of Rosita and San Juan, which is another household, that's twenty cats, out on the street living under cars. And, uh, in every mobile home park, what, okay, so fixing them is very good. So after they're released, then what? There's conflict with neighbors about coming to feed them, the defecation of the cats, because maintenance, nobody, they're not owned, no one takes care of them. So that's the other part of it. So, um, and I think, um, you know, for the quality of life, sometimes when life is too hard out there for them, or even in the shelter, uh, you know, you cannot be without euthanasia. There has to be some of that to maintain the quality of life for the animals. So, thank you very much.
Lala Trang.
Hello, Mayor and esteemed city council members. Um, today I'm here on, well, first, if you don't know me, my name is Lala Trang. I'm a field representative for Congressman Lou Correa, um, here in the forty-sixth district. Um, so I'm here today to read a letter written by Congressman Correa on behalf and in support for Item 7A. I also have copies, so if you wanna read along. Dear Garden Grove Mayor Jones and Council, I write to you in support of Item 7A on your council agenda this evening, regarding a proposed resolution opposing the Department of Homeland Security's public charge rule change as applied to legal permanent residency applications. As you may know, the President has released his final rule related to public charge in the federal register. This rule forces struggling families pursuing the American dream to make an impossible choice, feed their children or become a U.S. citizen. Worse, this rule supports the factually incorrect notion that immigrants are a financial burden to the American taxpayer and subside on the welfare state. Let it be known, these stereotypes are false and dangerous. The United States is a land of reinvention and opportunity. For most of us, our immigrant ancestors arrived in the United States with nothing but a hope and a prayer. And from that, we build the wealthiest and most powerful nation the world has seen. The administration's change to the public charge ignores our history and turns the nation's back to our legacy. As a high-ranking member of the House Committee on Homeland Security and the House Judiciary Committee, both of which have jurisdiction over this rule change, I have been pushing back on policies like these for my two and a half years in Congress. I have spoken to, spoken to the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security and United States Citizenship and Immigration Services, and demanded that these policies not stand as they are detrimental to my district. As this community's representative in Washington, I have fought to prevent this change from taking place. As a chairman on the Department of Homeland Security Committee and a member of the Judiciary Committee, I have stood arm-in-arm with our allies and face-to-face with our opponents. Be it General John Kennedy, Secretary Kristin Nielsen, or Acting Secretary Kevin McAllen, I have stood up to this administration's consistent assault on immigration communities. We must not be silent when our families, our neighbors, and our values are under attack. While the resolution before you would not prevent the administration from implementing this rule change, it shows that the city of Garden Grove stands in solidarity with the citizens. I urge you all to support Ms. Kim Nguyen and our immigrant community by standing with our friends, families, and neighbors and rejecting this rule. It's your job to stand up for the citizens of Garden Grove. It's my job to stand up against the President. Sincerely, Congressman Lou Correa. Thank you for your time.
Carol Barnes.
Hi, my name is Carol Barnes, and I'm here to speak to you because I realize you've had some sheltering issues, and I know you left Orange County Shelter and went on your own. Um, I understand that you want to save these cats out there, these feral cats, feral, but they, they are not wild animals. These animals were abandoned, they were one-time pets. They've become feral because they were put out there on their own to survive. And to put them out there, let me tell you, you are overrun with cats right now, a tremendous amount. And they're out there suffering, because not enough people are feeding them. Many of your residents do not want them. Uh, there's been incidents where they're shot with arrows, they're shot with BBs, they're... Uh, one person didn't want cats in their apartment, and they took a kitten and hung it on the side-view mirror of the feeder. Um, kittens were beheaded, people do horrible things. You know, a lot of times, unfortunately, and this is the fault of irresponsible owners, but when you take these animals, fix them, and throw them out to fend for themselves, you're basically re-abandoning them. And I love animals, I mean, I have a passion for animals. But I have seen them, I've, there's, there's, they're at, uh, Rosita, uh, what is it? Rosita and San Juan. Oh my God, the kittens and cats were running after the feeder's car, they're so excited they're gonna get fed. And then the rest of the time, they're sitting along the side, under the cars, waiting. They're getting, but the animals are being put out to be fed to coyotes. And I told the director at Orange County, I said, "You might as well call it Feed the Coyote Program, because that's what you're doing." And I said, "So unless you have structured, uh, a structured, um, organization that's taking care of them, where you have, um, someone looking out for them, feeding them, you are putting them at peril." I mean, and my new mantra now is, "A kind death is better than a horrible, suffering life." And that is happening to these poor animals. And even someone from Stray Cat Alliance got called out one time because police were called, because people don't want them feeding there. And here, uh, the cops are telling the people, "Well, if you don't want the cats, then you should take them to shelter and don't give your name or your address. Or take them and have them euthanized. Or you can take them and dump them somewhere else." So, of course, yeah, well, you, you know, if an organization's supposed to be taking care of them is dumping them, I guess that would make sense, right? I, I have brought some paper, some articles about, article that was about why it wasn't a good idea to put these animals back onto the street. Uh, that was in Voice of OC. Also, there is another one about, um, should feral cats be banned? And then there's also another one called socially conscious sheltering. It's not no-kill, it's not high-kill, it's how about somewhere in between? And thinking about each individual animal and what they deserve. Because these, these are, and what our community deserves are, is an education, to get out there and teach these people that these are pets, that they need to be cared for, to give them the resources, because you're taking animals that basically no one wants and doing, you know, these procedures on them to pitch them out and take care of themselves. How about giving those resources to your, your residents that need them? I helped a gentleman who was very happy that I, I told him, "Look, I can get you a neuter for your year-and-a-half-old cat that's been going out impregnating other cats." And he was so happy, I took him down, I got him our rescue prize, and then he had another, he had a female kitten. I said, "Let's get her in," the very next day. He got our rescue prize to get a spay, and he was so appreciative. This is where we need to go, you know, in the right direction. And I think you should have, come up with some kind of animal welfare committee, and let's try and get a better shelter system in place. But what they're doing with little to no outreach, folks, and there is little to no outreach, they're putting them out there to fend for themselves. So please consider what's best for the animals and best for the communities. And I have these, uh, there's six of them, but if you would hand them out. And I put my email and my number here, and so I, I hope, you know, that that seventy thousand would make a difference, but not if they're just gonna pitch them out there to fend for themselves, it's wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, thank you. Carlos.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Carlos Guadarama, and I'm here representing the Office of Congressman Alan Maundt to read the following statement in support of Garden Grove City Council's proposed resolution opposing the Trump Administration's public charge rule change. It reads as follows. "I want to thank Councilwoman Kim Nguyen for introducing this resolution to oppose the Trump Administration's public charge rule. In Southern California, we know immigrants are valued members of our community. President Trump's proposed public charge rule would deny permanent legal residence or green cards to immigrants who have received non-cash public benefits, such as housing assistance or SNAP benefits. This rule would force many families to choose between their future in America or access to food and health care. For many parents, SNAP often referred, often referred to as food stamps, is the only resource they have to feed their young children. The fear of this new rule and the anti-immigration rhetoric from this administration has already shaken immigrant communities around the country. Many families have opted to disenroll their children from public benefits even before the rule was finalized, out of fear and confusion. Some of these families were indeed eligible for assistance, but regardless, made the choice that they thought was best for their children. According to the Kaiser Family Foundation, nearly eight in ten immigrants seeking legal permanent status have at least one characteristic that DHS could weigh negatively in determining the immigrant status under this proposal. The foundation estimates that up to four-point-seven million individuals could disenroll from these programs. Those who are most affected by this proposal are the most vulnerable members of our community, families with small children. These are just some of the reasons I've co-sponsored in the House the No Federal Funds for Public Charge Act, which would ensure that no federal funds are used to implement this new rule. These are also the same reasons I support this resolution. Let me end on this thought. Orange County, more so than just about anywhere in California, has seen the positive contributions and achievement of immigrants in our community. Our Little Saigon is the oldest and largest Vietnamese-American community in the United States. They are our friends, neighbors, families, and elected officials. They have built neighborhoods, businesses, and prosper, prospering and robust lives among us. We should celebrate these contributions and not demonize those immigrants who choose to build a life for their family here in America. I implore the city council to approve and adopt this resolution. Thank you." Leave a copy here.
Nick Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, I'm an honors graduate of Pacifica High School and former ASB officer, who became a teacher at Cal State, through Cal State Long Beach after earning my degree in biology and a minor in chemistry. I'm here to speak on a number of important things, but before I get to that, I do want to put in a plug for 7A, so I'm also in support of that. Also, I'm in support of you, as a council and as the mayor, uh, making sure that our Animal Care Services humanely treat all the animals and don't just release the cats out into the wild to fend for themselves. So come up with some solutions. Okay, now let's get to something that's very important. September is Suicide Prevention Month. Now, I've spoken to this council on several things. Today in the Orange County Register, on the front page of the Orange County Register, excuse me, on Sunday, Sunday's Orange County Register on the front page, "One in Five High Schoolers Contemplate Suicide." There are three important articles that start, two of which start on page one of Sunday's Orange County Register, on page one. I'm giving you a copy of it, I've sent you a PDF. Uh, what's that have to do with the city? I've also given you, uh, from the California Senate Rules Committee, Blue Light Awareness Week, having to do with the dangers of blue light, not only to the employees of the city, but the citizens and the students here in Garden Grove. Uh, you have the proclamation that you passed, all, that was passed Mental Health Awareness Month that you passed in May. So in keeping with that resolution, uh, I'm asking you to, to be in support of Assembly Bill 2246, which already passed three years ago, but it calls on stakeholders to get involved in suicide prevention. This is not just something that the schools should be dealing with. This takes an integrated approach, as I've tried to say in the past, and that's why I'm plugging that the city, for no charge, join the Be Well Orange County Program. And if you'll please invite Mr. Marshall Moncrief, who's the Executive Director of Mind OC, to come and do a PowerPoint presentation, that other cities, entities, and school districts have joined the Be Well OC Program, which is an integrated approach. And this is what we need, is an integrated approach to mental health awareness and, uh, and to improve, uh, health. So, I'm giving you this, and I'm asking you, as the action step, and also, in today's register on page one, is on bullying. And a lot of this has to do with misuse of social media, uh, and the importance of students and parents monitoring this. So as an action item, or future action item for the next meeting, I'm, I'm simply asking this council to put on the agenda for next, for your next meeting, a discussion item. At tonight's meeting, please place an agenda item for your next meeting to include ways to help youth of Garden Grove, including but not limiting to establishing a Commission on Youth and Wellness. A Commission on Youth and Wellness is what we need. Um, and many other cities have such commissions. But even if you don't want the commission right now, we can, we need to have the city involved. And so if you'll put it on the agenda, ways for the city to help the youth of Garden Grove. Now, in, in the Orange County News newspaper, it announces that tomorrow, at three o'clock at the Garden Grove Main Library, there's a seminar, a workshop on, on, for teens on suicide prevention. That's open to teens for tomorrow at the, at the Garden Grove Public Main Library at three o'clock. Also in the, uh, Orange County News article last Wednesday, uh, it talks about not only youth committing suicide, but we have a problem with policemen and officers across the country. So this is, this affects everybody. So over, about a hundred and sixty-some, uh, police officers across the country committed suicide last year. Uh, this is not something that's, it, it, the second-leading cause of death among teenagers is suicide. is suicide. And here in Orange County, we have a high rate. This article gives you the data and so on. But what are we going to do as a council and a city? We need to come together and have an integrated approach with the school district and with other agencies, and coordinate this, and have a commission on youth and wellness. And the Youth and Wellness Commission could, as an example, include Youth and Government Day, it could include wellness, methods of wellness, and so on. So please put this on the agenda. I would ask Councilmember Kim Nguyen, she's the youngest person here on the council, if you'd please put it on the agenda. Thank you. And here's a handout for each of you.
Robin Traheo.
Hello. I wanted to speak from my heart, and I, I also didn't want to miss a beat, so I wrote it down, so forgive me for reading it from my paper. I don't want to miss anything. So I've been jotting and writing and thinking, okay. I just want to say good evening, and thank you for letting me share my heart and my story with you tonight. I have lived in Garden Grove for over 45 years, and yes, now you probably know my age, and extremely honored and proud to have raised my family here. Family in the city of Garden Grove, family who works for Garden Grove Unified, and I also work for the county. A year ago, I came across, up my path, a beautiful mama cat and her little ones. My heart sank. I knew immediately I needed to help, but how? Do I give her a blanket? Do I give her milk? I worked for the Orange County Department of Education, I've been there 32 years, in a high-profile medically fragile class. I can think on a dime. I didn't know what to do. I didn't know what to do. I walk away like everybody else does? Do I stay there? I've seen it now, I'm in it. I'm here to help. Oh my gosh, she meowed, so I would see her. She was innocent, helpless, and all alone, yet so terrified of me and of the people, and of people. I wanted her to know I was different, I was safe, I would get help. I did a lot of late-night internet searching and many phone calls, but seemed to get the same answers. Nope, I can't help you. Ma'am, they're everywhere. They won't last with the cars and the coyotes, so don't worry about it. Well, being accounting employee and working with children with special needs wasn't good enough for me. I wasn't going to have that, no way. And it was unbelievable that people were telling me this, people I lived with. I wasn't okay with any of that, and I kept at it. Well, my mama cat and I found our wings that night, as I never gave up, and our wings were given us by Cat Alliance. Her world and my world were about to change. They were immediately taken into their TNR program, and along with that came so much more. My eyes opened, my eyes opened to all they believed in and stand for, educating me and supporting me, so I can share with others the goodness of the TNR program and Cat Alliance, as I walked in the life of this feral cat and her family. I still see them every now and then, and it makes me smile that they had a chance because of me, and I am so grateful to Cat Alliance. It's just them and not 40 of them. And I feel Cat Alliance is not putting them out there to fend for themselves, people are.
I came tonight, heard about this meeting that's going on with the feral cats, and I just came to speak of personal experience that happened with me in about the year 2000, and, excuse me if I stumble, I'm not feeling really well, but anyway, in the year about 2007, my neighbor moved out and left one female cat there. From 2007 to about 2011, they had multiplied greatly. At 2011, I started trapping, neutering them, getting them fixed with the help of groups that were similar to Stray Cat Alliance. I really didn't have much to know what was going on. I had caught 38 different cats and had them fixed and returned them back to the population. And now, mind you, I live on Harbor and Garden Grove, a one short block of eight houses on one side and commercial property on the other. Now, they thrived and, and cats would come and go, but for the most part, the herd didn't, the flock didn't get any bigger, any smaller. Occasionally, I would see a new cat that would come in and maybe hang around, and then I would try and trap and get it fixed with the help of other people. And then I've heard about Stray Cat Alliance, that they're, what they're doing, and, and I just wanted to speak in their behalf of what I've seen happen. The colony stayed pretty much, like I said, the same. There was a few cats that came in and out, and I occasionally trapped them and got them fixed. For the most part, they thrived, they did good. In fact, the female cat that started it all, one female cat, I absolutely seen her about seven months ago, still running around, not a tooth in its mouth, and how, how it survived, I'll never know, and kept having babies. Like I said, alone, that I fixed 38 and then more. Then, two years ago, in 2017, somebody that really didn't know a lot about cats decided they'd take it upon themselves, start trapping them, and they was getting rid of them. I didn't notice, it took about two weeks, all of a sudden, the ones that I seen were friendly, were, were gone, and other ones that started coming up missing. And after 13, I found out the neighbor that did it, talked to the animal control people, but by then, 13 had been gone, and more. What I'm trying to say is that the colony blessed us. Now, in the last two years, there's probably 20 new cats that are coming there that I haven't been able to catch, fix, or do anything with, but the population is again getting out of control. The other part of it that I wanted to say is that they did, like I said, the cats did live, and what, the biggest other problem I had that I, I got to appreciate about cats being there, is that I had a mouse and rat infestation every day for years. When I first moved into this place, I'd catch at least three rats in my garage yard, my dog would catch them, every day. And then when the cats moved in, the rats and the mice and other vermin haven't been around. So I just want to say that, to take good consideration on programs like this, just what they would do and how they help the animals that are there. Thank you.
I actually didn't even, no, I was going to talk, I didn't, I'm, I'm really not here to, to be on any quest. I'm here to talk about the stray cat problem in Garden Grove. It is really bad. It's bad everywhere. It's bad everywhere. I'm one of very few trappers out there, and I did trap for Stray Cat Alliance, they were picking them up, and in a month, we did about 60, but then that funding, I think, got pulled. So that worked out really well. That doesn't work out so well anymore, because now I have to fend for myself, and sometimes we can get vouchers, but it's kind of cut into, cut down the cats. It's not just a Garden Grove problem, but it's a really big problem. And the coyotes that, I also want to say, I'm looking at that map, you guys are missing Springdale. You know that, right? Springdale is part of Garden Grove. Okay. And the coyotes are on Springdale. And I live really close to Springdale. Well, I do live off Springdale. And, again, I didn't even know I was going to be up here. When I go out and trap, I can go to any corner in Garden Grove at 9:00, and they just come from everywhere. And these people that feed them, Mother Teresa, they're no better, they've helped cause the problem. I mean, it's, I don't even know what to say. It was helping when we were able to trap, and I was in, being able to do that, but you guys really, we have a problem. And I don't know if it's anybody's one problem, and I don't know if it's an easy fix, it's clearly not. Education, people don't care. It's like the guy said, he, he waited six years, though, five years, to get the cat. I mean, as, as the math went out, you got a lot of cats now, and people just, they don't want to, it's not their problem. And it really is despicable, and it's sad, and it's as despicable as this administration on the immigrants, so. Everybody have a nice night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What Stray Cat Alliance has helped in our neighborhood is controlled the cat population. We had so many kittens in our neighborhood, and I have cats myself, and the cats in my neighborhood that I have have caught myself. I've tamed them, I've got them fixed, and I have two right now, but I have some that are outside that are fed. What Stray Cats Alliance has helped me in our neighborhood, they're not mine, but I do feed an outside cat that I do have, I've trapped in our neighborhood, they've helped me this year alone and last year with about 25 animals in our neighborhood that have been fixed. That means that they've been fixed, yes, they've been released, but they're not being reproduced. So that's helped in our neighborhood so much. I'm grateful to them. Unfortunately, there, you, you do have a program that is there, that I have had animals that are sick, and they've had to be euthanized and put to sleep. I know that's not the greatest thing, but that does happen, and it seems like there's not something in our neighborhood or in our city to help with the situation, because it seems like it's getting bigger. With Stray Cat Alliance, I would like the services to continue, because it would help in our neighborhood and around our area, and that would be great. But if you can do funding for that, that would be very good to our neighborhood, I think so. And also, I would love to have, like, a shelter or something. It seems like for us, because where I am, even though I, I live in Garden Grove, I have a Santa and a zip code, so I don't know who to call. And I really, you, you guys have split up everything, so you call one, and they say, "No, you have to call this one, and you have to call this one," so it's always a different thing. So it's really difficult to figure out who to help or what number to get. So it would be, that would be great, too. So thank you.
Okay, that's all the pink cards I have. Is there anybody else wishing to speak at oral communications that did not submit a card? All right, seeing none, we will close oral communications. We're going to recess to conduct other legislative bodies' business, so we'll move to successor agency. Is that right? Or you want to do sand district? We'll do sand district. I want to note, before I hand it over, that we have Item 2A on the sand district consent corresponds with Item 3D on the city council agenda, so when you get to that, if we could take those both simultaneously? Do we have to do those in separate motion?
Yes, please. We will have to do that.
All right. I think I got it? So at this time, yeah, I got it. So this time, we'll open up the sanitary district. If the clerk could call roll.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tuhal Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Bridgum?
Here.
And President O'Neill?
Here.
So we've already heard oral communication simultaneously with council. At this time, I'd like to pull 2A, and we'll move on that, and then we'll do council, pull it from council and do that also, so.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and read the title for Item 2A, is an approval of an amendment to the agreement with Republic Waste Services of Southern California LLC, doing business as Garden Grove Disposal for Recycling Cart Rate Implementation. Again, this is a joint action item with the Garden Grove Council, so we'll take a vote first on the sanitary district. Motion?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Please call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And so do you want to pull the?
So we'll go over to the city council meeting as well, under Item 3D.
I'd like to move 3D from the city council agenda consent.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you. We'll finish, finish up the sanitary district, so, yeah, move the balance, there's one item.
Second.
Motion and second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great, thank you. Any matters from president or board members? Thank you. We'll adjourn until the next regular sanitary district meeting, October 22 at 5:30. Going back to. We'll actually go to successor agency next, so Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bridgum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tuhal Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here.
We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, we just have two consent items, receive and file the minutes, and receive and file the warrant, warrant, so can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any successor agency matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. That takes us on to consent items. We've already taken action on several, it's recommended that we move on the balance simultaneously, unless anyone would like to pull.
Yes, I would like to pull 3G just for a question.
Okay. Would you like to move the balance?
I will move the balance.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
3G per Mayor Protem Klaufenstein.
My question for Director Murray, so this is an agreement with Stray Cat Alliance to provide services related to feral and stray cats citywide. The budget at one time was $35,000, and this evening, we'd be approving a doubling of that budget, is that correct?
Correct.
So with that, really, just a quick commentary, I think this is an important program for the city of Garden Grove. I want to commend staff, Maria Stipe, Mark Gladney, Bill Murray, they worked very diligently on this. I was honored to be a part of it. I think doubling this budget is needed, I think it's necessary, and as I said, I think this is a good program for our cats and for our community as a whole, so with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Sorry, who was the second? Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, that takes us on to, yay, sorry, takes us on to public hearings for A.
And we have a public hearing for an adoption of a resolution to approve a street vacation number SV-001-2019, vacating and abandoning the southern portion of Brady Way, south of Stanford Avenue, and reserving there on, excuse me, public service easements for existing public utility facilities. And our city attorney, Sandoval, is here to provide the staff report.
Yes, can, can I have the overhead PowerPoint? I just want to show the exhibit. So two meetings ago, the city council adopted a resolution calling a public hearing for today in order to hear testimony before adopting a resolution vacating the southern portion of Brady Way, and that is delineated on the map. You can see the actual delineation, close up, and then you can see a little bit further away of the area that would be vacated. The reason for the vacation is, as you can see, it deadens on the 22 freeway, it doesn't serve for travel purposes, and over the years, it's only being used for access to that property on Knott Street, 12821 Knott Street. This area is a former sports facility, it was purchased, and the new owner wishes to expand the building, for that, they would need additional parking. And there's an opportunity to vacate this portion of the street and then subsequently sell it to this adjacent property owner, the Streets and High Waste Code authorizes that, and that would enable the new building owner to expand and use that portion of Brady Way that's being vacated as parking and access for trucks and, and other delivery vehicles. So before you use a resolution, that would actually vacate the delineated portion of Brady Way, it would also reserve public utility easements for both the city, the city has a storm drain and water line, and it would also reserve public utility easements for actual utilities. There is electric, gas, and also, there are oil pipelines going through there. You may know that back in the '60s, this was Knott Street, it used to go through, but when the freeway was constructed and widened, they relocated. Um, but when the freeway was constructed and widened, um, they relocated Knott Street for, to create that off-ramp, I'm sorry, the on-ramp, and then the Brady Way became Brady Way. So it really became a dead-end street. That is my staff report and presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. If not, then recommendation is for the Council to open a public hearing, hear testimony, uh, and then close the public hearing and consider adoption of the resolution.
Staff, before we open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues? George?
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely want to make a motion on this. Um, this is a, uh, one of those few times where you get a win-win-win. Um, this community on those houses that are butted, um, have been living with that problem there for years. Uh, you know, people going back there, doing drugs, homeless people sleeping there, breaking beer bottles at night, all kinds of stuff. Uh, so it's been a, a constant, constant complaint from those neighbors. So, um, in talking with, uh, many of them, they're very excited about this. They are hoping that the Planning Commission will take under consideration some noise reduction uh, stuff when they do, do the building there, but with that being said, they, they seem to be, uh, pretty happy. I just want to clarify, um, we're not talking a sale, we're talking a lease of the property, correct?
No, we're actually talking a sale, but um, one of your items that will be coming up is a license agreement, and that's a temporary license agreement while we complete an actual purchase and sale agreement, an escrow, to close on the property.
Okay, so initially a lease and then do a sale?
Yeah, initially a license, uh, and it will allow them to submit the applications for processing the land use entitlements, and also they can actually close off the street temporarily.
And then how soon will, once this gets passed, will that street get closed? Because I know we have some very ancient, anxious residents over there who would like that street closed last year.
Yeah, we'll work with the property owner to see how quickly they can do that. Um, you know, I'm in negotiations with their attorney, and they're very anxious to move forward with a purchase and sale agreement, uh, to the point where, uh, you may be seeing a purchase and sale agreement in October. So, uh, if we move that quickly, they may want to hold off until they actually own the land. Because that way, they can do a more permanent, um, barrier as opposed to a temporary one.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, 4B.
Right, on 4B, we have an adoption of a resolution to approve a recommendation from the Traffic Commission to modify existing street diverters on Flower Street and Bowen Street at Trask Avenue, Garden Grove. And we have Mr. Daivu here to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The objective of this item is to forward the recommendation of the July 2nd, 2019 Traffic Commission meeting to modify the street diverters on Flower Street and Bowen Street at Trask Avenue. Due to excessive traffic volumes and speeding concerns on Cypress Street, staff was directed by the Traffic Commission to perform a study of the existing street closures and diverters on Flower Street, Hope Street, Bowen Street, and Adlin Street at Trask Avenue to determine the feasibility of revising the existing access restrictions to help relieve the traffic volumes on Cypress Street. Flower Street and Bowen Street currently only allow right turnout movements onto Trask Avenue. Hope Street and Adlin Street are completely closed at Trask Avenue. These barriers were approved by City Council at the March 12th, 1996 meeting. Staff collected traffic counts and speed survey data at various locations in the study area to determine the overall traffic circulation. After reviewing the data, it appears that a large portion of motorists enter Cypress Street from Trask Avenue to access the neighborhood in the west. The speed surveys did not show any apparent speeding issues in the area. Staff also conducted a neighborhood meeting on June 6th, 2019 to inform the neighborhood of the study and to receive input from the affected residents. Approximately 31 households attended the meeting. Most of the residents that spoke were not in favor of reopening any of the streets. They felt that it would increase traffic and be detrimental to the safety in the area. It should be noted that there are some areas in the neighborhood that do not have sidewalks. So considerations should be made that the increase in traffic volumes may impact pedestrians. However, the potential decrease in traffic volumes on Cypress Street and Central will help increase safety in these areas. Some residents did speak in support of providing additional access from Trask Avenue because it would decrease the traffic volumes on Cypress Street and help rebalance the traffic circulation in the neighborhood. At the July 2nd, 2019 meeting, the Traffic Commission approved recommending to the City Council to open Flower Street for right-in and right-out only traffic, and to open Bowen Street to all movements. Hope Street and Adlin Street are to remain as-is. Initial cost estimates are approximately $50,000 to reconstruct Flower Street and $75,000 to reconstruct Bowen Street. If approved, the project will be placed on the five-year capital improvement project list and prioritized for construction. There is no impact to the general fund. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from residents notified within the affected area, adopt a resolution, amending City Council Resolution Number 7852-96, and approving the recommendation of the Traffic Commission to modify the existing right turn diverter on Flower Street at Trask Avenue to allow right turns in and out only, and to modify the existing right turn diverter on Bowen Street at Trask Avenue to allow all movements. This concludes my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Uh, Mayor and Council members, uh, I would like to excuse myself because I live right at this intersection at Flowers and Trask. Uh, but I also would like to vote on the Bowen part of it, which is much further from my properties. So for now, I would like to, uh, you know, recuse myself for this particular item, and if I may, hopefully we can separate this, so I can vote on the Bowen project.
Okay. Any questions of staff this time?
I do have a quick question. Is there any problems with separating the Bowen part out of this?
I was gonna, I'll get to, yeah, I'll get to that. What's that?
Kind of cut him off in the middle of his question because he said you were going to get to that. So I'm saying, do you want to get to that because you stopped asking the question?
I get to that right this second. I was gonna, I was gonna.
Open?
Yeah, yeah. Um, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. I was thinking the same thing. I was gonna kind of, well. Can we open the public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so, um, for one, is there any, is there any issue with separating it? We already saw that.
No, there's, there's no issue in separating. We don't have separate resolutions, but we, you know, if you direct us to separate them, uh, you know, we can come back with, um, or the resolution is just a memorization of your formal action. So if you direct to separate any one of these items, we can have the very same resolution, but, you know, separating each one. So, you know, we have a, we will have a, a vote on a resolution for the two intersections, and then a separate resolution, same language, but only pertaining to the third intersection. So you can do that.
Is there any particular time sensitivity or time urgency to this? Or can we, can we direct staff to bring it back, separate it at a future meeting?
I have no problem bringing it back if that's what's required.
Yeah, I don't know that it's required to bring it back because it's, is the exact same language.
So we can vote on it tonight.
As long as we understand that you want to separate it, it's the same resolution, but just separating the item.
Would oblige to continue it and bring it back separated as two separate items.
I'm easy.
That's okay. Okay.
Yeah, the other option is to continue the item and for us to bring back and make it clear.
I would prefer to go that way if we could, so we all have time to get our hands around this a little bit more, and ask that we continue it till the next meeting and bring it back as two separate items. Do we need to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, because of the public hearing, so that way we don't have to re-notice the public hearings. So just continue the public hearing, reopen the public hearing, and continue it till next meeting.
Can I make a modification also? With the, the presentation we get, can we get a map like we did on the previous presentation, showing exactly where, what's going to be done?
Like a, like a pan back map?
Yeah, like the one we just had on Brady Way that kind of shows what's getting done.
I would appreciate that, too.
Yeah, I could include some of those exhibits in your packet.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion. Was that a second? Call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie recusing himself.
Okay, that's the end of public hearings. We go on to Commission and Committee Matters. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Add back in here.
Okay. We go on to Commission Committee Members Matters. Again, I would like to ask that, that we continue both of these again till our next meeting. My apologies, I was out of town for a period of time in between since our last meeting, so I didn't really have time to make the rounds and go through and figure out what we want to do.
I'll second it.
Thanks. That goes for 5A and 5B.
Motion received, seven yes votes, to continue both items 5A and 5B.
Okay, that takes us on to items for consideration. We have four items, so first is 6A.
Mayor and Council, 6A is the, Paul is here to make a presentation if you wish, but this is an item that we already talked about with respects to the vacation of Brady Way. So if you need a staff report, we can give you a staff report. If not, you can take an action.
Move approval.
I'll vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
6B.
Right, on 6B, we have an approval to participate in the 2019-2020 Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, and Police Chief DeRay is here to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of Council. The California Office and Traffic Safety Awards grants to local law enforcement agencies through the University of California, Berkeley Traffic Safety Center. These one-year grants start on October 1st, 2019, and end September 30th, 2020. The Garden Grove Police Department has applied for and received similar grants dating back to 1996. This grant, uh, this year focuses on the reduction of persons killed and injured in alcohol-involved crashes by using best-practice strategies. These strategies include DUI and driver's license checkpoints, DUI saturation patrol, and enforcement strategies directed at vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. The police and finance departments will be responsible for providing necessary reporting to fulfill goals and objectives of the grant. The total amount of the 2019 to 2020 grant will be $275,000. There is no requirement to hire additional personnel, and there are no out-of-pocket expenses. There is neither cost nor income to the city based upon participation of the grant. It is recommended that Council authorize participation in the selective traffic enforcement program, accept the Office of Traffic and Safety Grant Funds in the amount of $275,000, authorize the Chief of Police Finance Director and Finance Manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city, and allocate these grant monies to fund selective traffic enforcement operations. That is the end of my report, and Lieutenant Gildea and I are available for any questions.
I'll second.
I'll the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
6C.
6C, we have an award of a contract to Turbo Data Systems, Inc. for parking citation processing services. And Mr. Murray is here to provide the staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Tonight's, uh, Council is being asked to award a contract for parking citation processing service. Uh, ticket, parking ticket processing provides our residents with a third-party review of parking tickets, ticket issues in addition to the normal processing duties. Parking tickets are generally issued in order to provide effective sweeping of city streets and, which is required by environmental law. Uh, staff prepared a request for proposal, and in June, received three responses. Staff reviewed and rated the proposals and determined that Turbo Data would provide the best service to the city. Need of this contract is the addition of franchise tax board holds, uh, which will be placed against state tax refunds. These holds have proven to be fiscally prudent for other communities. The Turbo Data contract is a, for a not-to-exceed price of $270,000 for two years, with an exception, or with an option to extend the contract for an additional two years. Funding for this, uh, work exceeds our budgeted amount by about $50,000 per year, and we also have a 10% contingency that'll, that'll be added on to that. Should the City Council award the contract this evening, this service will be, uh, will continue uninterrupted. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, uh, motion?
Motion, second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Can I ask that we take a quick, um, break for just a few minutes, and then we'll reconvene?
That's a bouncing noise.
The Department of Homeland Security would be penalizing visa applicants for using benefits they are allowed and eligible to use. Moving past 2019, there are plans to issue denials based on age, if you're too young or too old to work, too sick to work, too many children or dependents, lack a certain level of education and skills in order to work, and will do a more thorough look into an individual's financial history and status. So really quickly, Medicaid, which I stated in California's Medi-Cal, goes off of 138% FPL, which is the federal poverty level. And just to give you an idea, for one individual, that is a gross income of $16,395. For two individuals, that's $22,108. For three, $27,081. So on and so forth. Tanis in California is known as CalWorks, which has a 48-month limit for a lifetime, must be on a welfare-to-work program, required to work at least 30 hours a week if you're a single parent, and it's basically cash aid for families in need. SSI is for people who are 65 or older, as well as blind or have other disabilities with little to no income. SNAP, which is food stamps in California, is called CalFresh, is for low-income, recently expanded to include SSI-eligible individuals. So if you have SSI, you also have to apply for food stamps. CalWorks is a public assistance program for families with little to no cash to be used for housing, food, utilities, clothing, and/or medical care, and is meant to be immediate and short-term solution for families in need. Now, long-term care, we just gave an award to Acacia Adult Day Services for 40 years. To give you perspective, long-term care includes multiple different programs, such as home health, which is when someone comes into the household to take care of an individual. That costs about $59,000 a year. Adult daycare is about $20,000 a year. Assisted living is about $54,000 a year. And skilled nursing facilities is over $100,000 a year. Bringing that back to the local level, CalOptima, which is Medi-Cal in Orange County, services anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000 to Garden Grove residents. Garden Grove houses the third-largest population of CalOptima membership. That means anywhere from almost half to more than half of our Garden Grove residents require low-income health insurance. There is a stigma with using public assistance. And honestly, the biggest insult you can give to someone who is low-income is that they don't know how to budget their money. They know how to budget it. There is just an unattainable, unrealistic, irrational logic behind how far you can stretch a dollar. Minimum wage in California is $12 an hour. An average person works 40 hours a week. That's about $480 a week. For a month, that's $1,920. For the year, that's $23,000, yes, before taxes. That's not even including what the government takes away to pay for these said programs. The average studio in Garden Grove costs $1,454 a month. That's about $17,448 a year. An average one-bedroom is $1,660 a month, which is about $19,920 a year. If I am working one job at minimum wage, after I pay for rent in a studio, I have $466 left. If I have a one-bedroom, that's $260 left. Not including taxes, gas, food, childcare, insurance, clothes, shoes, and a laundry list of other items, including laundry. So needless to say, I better get a second job. I will use my own family, for instance. I have family who have waited 12 years going through the proper sponsorship process to gain permanent residency. They've been here less than a month. There's three adults. One individual was a dentist in Vietnam, came here. Those qualifications, that education doesn't transfer over. Been here less than a month, and she was able to obtain a job assisting, being a receptionist and helping clean in a dental office. I highly doubt she's making a minimum wage. Her husband has been applying for jobs nonstop and hasn't received anything yet. Her daughter, trying to go to medical school, has applied to work in medical offices and labs, hasn't received anything yet. These are individuals who have gone to school, have education, have the skills, but that doesn't transfer over when you come to this country. My stepmom, married my dad, came here in six months, had to wait three years before she could apply for citizenship, was a nurse. Her family was poor. She was the only one that they could afford to send to college. Came here and she had to work as a nail technician. We finally had some spare money, and we paid for, not me, my dad paid for her to go to Santa Ana College to become a medical assistant, and that's what she does now for a living. She went to nursing school, fully qualified, but unable to attain those credits here in the United States. We have one-third population Vietnamese, one-third Latino, predominantly Mexican, who come here through the proper channels, come here with nothing, may or may not have assistance from their families, but are unable to obtain jobs that are going to be realistic to be able to afford to live. Not just in the United States, not just in California, but in Garden Grove as well. I think it's really important that we send a strong message that we stand by our residents, we stand by our immigrant communities, especially those who are following the lawful process to gain citizenship. These individuals are waiting anywhere from three, five, or more years before they can even apply for citizenship. And in that interim, what if you lose a job? What if you get sick? There's other circumstances that occur in order for an individual to need these programs. And like I mentioned before, these programs require you to apply for the plethora of them, not just one. And so I know that this is an issue where most of you will abstain or vote no or just not say anything, but I think that logically speaking, looking at your wallet, we're not going to do anything like right control here in Garden Grove. So what are we doing to provide that assistance and that support to our residents? I think speaking up is extremely crucial. Myself and the city manager were in a meeting earlier today where we are watching testimonials of people who were persecuted in other countries. And one of the things that I left thinking about was something that the individual being interviewed said, and that was that silence, when you're observing incidents of injustice occur, often are worse than the actual injustice that's being done. And so I really plead that you look at this matter as cents and dollars, because I just provided you a ton of stats with the cents and dollars, and that you support this resolution in opposition of the new public charge change.
Well, I will bring it up. Unfortunately, we have a couple congressmen and a senator who don't understand scope and civics. You know, last night saw immigration policy wasn't anything that city councils have any actionable jurisdiction over. Personally, while I totally empathize with Councilman Nguyen's position, I don't think bringing forth items, especially politically divisive items that we have zero jurisdiction over, zero impact on, does anyone any good. If, no matter how we vote on this issue, yes, no, nothing changes. It's just a platitude, and it makes our community divided. It creates hostility in our community, and it serves no purpose. To say that somehow a resolution like this is going to make people, I mean, let's face it, the vast majority of our citizens don't watch the cable, and they don't see what's going on in these meetings. All this is doing is stirring the pot. Unfortunately, we have a senator and two congressmen who don't understand that councils don't have jurisdiction over immigration policy. You know, since immigration's policy has been brought up and it's on the agenda, I would make a secondary motion that we actively oppose sanctuary state policy. But I won't do that, because I know that that would be a meaningless resolution that wouldn't go anywhere even if we were to approve it, because we don't have jurisdiction over sanctuary state policy. So I wouldn't bring it up to begin with, because I know that that's totally inappropriate for this dais. So that's my position on it. I don't believe that this belongs here. I don't think it's an appropriate venue for it, and I'll leave it at that.
Before other council members jump in, I'd like to say that this is completely different. These are legally, lawfully, permanent residents, residents of Garden Grove, who are here legally, lawfully, and who are eligible for services that we provide through our housing authority. So what mess-
Have no impact over immigration policy, and you're asking us to make a resolution against immigration policy that we have no control over.
I'm vocalizing our support.
It does nothing, one way or the other. If we vote for it or if we vote against it, nothing changes. It's just a meaningless platitude. It's all it is.
We do multiple meaningful or meaningless platitudes in the city of Garden Grove when we pass resolutions time and time again.
Beyond our scope, and this is definitely beyond our scope.
We've passed a compassionate city resolution, which is a pseudo-sanctuary cities resolution.
That was before the state became a sanctuary state and exempted all that. It doesn't matter. That was when cities had jurisdiction, and then the state came in and made a sanctuary state law, and it didn't matter what the cities did.
That's fine, we can agree to disagree.
Anybody else care to speak?
Can I chime in?
Please.
Even though the city have no jurisdiction over the immigrants in Pharaoh, but we are here, and especially in Garden Grove, we are a very unique city where we're very diverse. One-third of our constituents are API Vietnamese, one-third Latinos. We are here to actually stand by our constituents, who most of us, include myself, was once an immigrant. We stand by them. And don't forget, a lot of our constituents are here legally. We start as the permanent, we call permanent aliens. We go, they went, or include myself, went through the process. Five years to apply for citizenship. Okay? So we here not just about intervening of the jurisdiction or not, we're here to support, to be there for our constituents. We heard you, we heard your concern, we are stand by you, we're supporting you. That's what the resolution's about, okay? It's about being compassionate, it's about being caring. That's my two cents.
I just want to go back to pointing out that this could affect anywhere between $75,000 to $100,000 Garden Grove residents, or more. That's just a rough estimate.
I think I echo the opinion of Councilman George Brettingham that whatever we say here doesn't, I don't believe it create, it have any weight. We have, with all respect, we have two of our representative in Congress, Congressman Correa and Lawrento, who are my, you know, very dear friends. And I support them on many issue. But I think we elect them to represent us at Congress to move policy and agenda like So I think this issue should be rest on their shoulders to take action. And even if Congress pass a resolution to oppose the ruling or the proposed ruling of the Homeland Security Department, President Trump or Homeland Security may decide to do nothing. So let alone a resolution from a small city in California. I also would like to express that not all Vietnamese-Americans agree with this policy. When the Vietnamese immigrant came here after '75, many of us take our, you know, have a heartfelt for our relatives and friends who are stuck in Vietnam or in other refugee camps. And many of us, after settling down, worked, some of us worked two jobs, three jobs, we then sponsor our relatives from Vietnam to come over to the United States. My family sponsor many of our relatives. One of the things that we have to do, and we're very proud of that, is signing a agreement with the government that we will take care of the people who we sponsor, so that they will not be a burden to the government financials. So we, who would like to sponsor many of our relatives coming to the United States, we need to take them in. We need to help them with the medical needs, medical bills. We need to help them looking for jobs. And that's what we were very proud, that we are not a burden to the government. Saying that, many of my friends throughout the last couple of years are very divided. Some are supporting the sanctuary city, and some are strongly opposing it. So I think this issue should be rest at Congress and not with the city council. And I hope that we don't have to delve into a divisive issue such like this in the future.
I'll just chime in. So for me, I mean, I have a little problem with the wording of the resolution on some of the issues. I don't think they're all 100% correct. And then from my standpoint, you know, this rule wouldn't go into effect until October 15th, and there's already been discussion nationally about, you know, lawsuits filed and whether this would be implemented or not while pending litigation. So really, we're making a resolution on something we don't even know 100% what it's going to look like. So I'm not in favor of moving it forward or anything right now. We can see how it progresses in the national debate and see what happens. But I'm a family of immigrants from a long time ago, and I've helped families that have immigrated to this country, and I know the rules and the procedures. And, you know, one thing that we have here in the United States of America is immigrants. We should be able to have some sort of means, because otherwise it keeps continuing to be a burden on all of us. I don't know how I could say it, but I'm a very compassionate person, and I would want, I'm just not in favor of, you know, just opening the floodgates. This kind of gives a statement like, hey, you know, it kind of opens the floodgates to it, even if you're over 100% or 50% dependent on the federal government, you know, where do we draw the line? I mean, I'd rather let the people that can make these decisions, you know, make the decisions rather than me just making a comment on it here at city council, you know. So I'm really not in favor of doing anything right now. I want to see how it plays out.
That direction as well. I wouldn't want, if I were to say that I'm not going to support this this evening, I don't want anyone to think that any of us, or that that makes us anti-immigrant. We're a nation of immigrants. Immigration is good for America. We want hard-working immigrants to come here and rise up, be successful, and have a life here. It's very important. But for me personally, I need to focus on the responsibilities of the city. And for me, this is just a bit too divisive. That's all.
But I gather there's not support to agendize this to become an actual voting item, so maybe it just, leave it at that. So, no motion, no action, nothing to be agendized. Takes us on to matters from council members and the mayor. Any matters?
A couple weeks ago, we had a community coffee in District 1. It was a pretty good turnout. Assemblyman Tyler Depp and myself co-sponsored it. Had about 50 community members showed up. It was a really good event, a lot of dialogue between the community and whatnot. So anyway, we're planning on, myself and School Board Trustee Terry Rocco, are going to be co-hosting a Run, Hide, Fight class free of charge to Garden Grove residents. For those who don't know, Run, Hide, Fight is a class that teaches you how to survive an active shooter situation, should you become involved in one. It's great for kids, it's great for adults, not little kids, obviously, but teenagers. And so I would, we're going to be noticing that probably in the next week or so, so please run it. We're going to try to schedule it for some time in November, so.
Opening to-
Hopefully all of you guys can attend.
Are you opening to inviting other people from other district, maybe even from nearby city?
Yeah, no, from Garden Grove, Garden Grove residents. But it'll be free of charge. We're going to just, however many people the venue will hold, it's just first come, first served. We're going to RSVP it. So, anyway, hopefully we get some people there and be a good event, so.
Good topics. I need some of that, too.
All right. John. Just one quick announcement. Shout out for the Garden Grove Women's Civic Club, they're having their annual holiday boutique in October, October 26th. It's a Saturday at the women's club on the Chapman and Gilbert from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So all kinds of holiday stuff there, Thanksgiving, Christmas, you name it. Be full of stuff, so it'd be pretty cool to go by there and check it out. That's it.
Sorry. I just want to give a shout out to my son Leon. He's going to turn 13 in two days, so happy birthday, Leon.
Just, I'm not sure if I will have a chance to have another council meeting with Tuha and Scott before they head out to Korea. I was very tempted to apply for it as well, but I hold it back because I have a very tight schedule coming up with the trade parade coming up very soon here. But have a very good trip if we do not have a chance to meet again to South Korea. And once, when you are there, I hope you would help us with spreading the, starting the process to maybe have a trade delegation to, you know, South Korea sometime in the spring. Many Vietnamese-American business import a lot of electronics, as well as cosmetics and other seafood from South Korea. And I think that would be a very good trade delegate if we can help, certainly help with the Korean tout in our city.
Just for the record, there's no reportable action out of closed session?
We have any need for any further closed session after this meeting?
It's up to the council if you want to.
No, okay.
But we don't have any more items.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, council members, yeah, we, Councilmember Nguyen and I will be at the next council meeting, and so we will be one more, but then the next day, we will leave with the other delegates from throughout Los Angeles, so we'll be going there. So we will get to spend one day in Anyang, I believe, meeting with some officials and talking about some of the important issues that you've talked to us about moving forward, how to build our partnership, and some future conversations, exchanges that the council will hopefully have with our sister city next year. So we'll be taking that message to them. I do want to mention, very briefly, Mayor, I assume you might want to say a few words about Steelcraft and their event. I want to at least take the opportunity, at least with Steelcraft, to thank all of the city staff that have worked really hard on this for a long, long time. We really think it could be a transformational project, and it is going to be a transformational project, and I think the community's going to be excited about maybe some of the things that you're going to say just in a minute. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Lisa Kim, specifically Monica Kovarubias, who worked a lot on it, all of her staff, Bill Murray, all of the folks in Public Works put a lot of time and effort into it, the planners, anybody else, Ms. Kim I should mention.
Would like to acknowledge our chief building official, David Dunn. In the last 11th hour, we pulled through, and we're seeing the result of our opening soon.
That's all.
Thanks. I'll piggyback on some of that. I had a hectic travel week this last week, but it was fun. I got to attend the American Planning Association Conference with Lisa and Lee up in Santa Barbara for a couple of days, got to speak on a couple of different panels, raving about our city and all the cool things we're doing, including Steelcraft, which is opening this Thursday evening to the public at 5:00 p.m. I believe we're going to be graced by the presence of NHL legend Timo Salani, who's opening his burger joint, The Penalty Box, and maybe some other celeb types stopping by to pay us some respects and check us out. It's been, what I'm talking about. My heartfelt kudos to all our staff and all our whole team that rallied together. I mean, this was an amazing effort to bring those eyeballs into the city, to bring the project forward, to make it all happen, to work through a number of complicated issues to bring what sort of looks like a simple project, to slap down a few containers on a parking lot. It's actually way more complicated than that. And just to our team and all the hoops that they jumped through to help the development team, all of their, gosh, these top-notch tenants that we have coming into town, so much fresh new blood, some of whom grew up in Garden Grove, came from Garden Grove and are opening businesses here. Just some really exciting new food concepts, Frozays, frozen Frozays and stuff at the Wybor. It's going to be, it's going to be a blast. So from already just kind of buzzing around there in the last couple of days, as the tenants and their friends and families have sort of invited just some of their own to come experiment, so they could kind of work the kitchens and make sure everything's working in preparation for the big grand opening on Thursday. There's a ton of energy buzzing around that place, and it's going to be a game changer in our downtown. So that's that. The only other comment was just, then I went to New York for two days last week of intense meetings on behalf of OCTA, because I also serve on the Board of OCTA, meeting with all the credit rating agencies. So we had to do presentations on the state of the Orange County economy for Standard and Poor's and Moody's and Fitch and, you know, all the kind of hardcore financial guys. So it's a pretty intense and exhaustive couple of days of meetings. OCTA is a well-oiled machine. They're very, they're very cash-heavy and very low on debt, and they just know how to work things. So it was well-received by the credit rating agencies. One of the big projects, obviously, well, OC Streetcar is one that we talked about. The other big project is the 405 freeway widening, which is going to create some, you know, some delays, some nuisances, some whatever in the interim as they do it. One thing the CEO, Daryl Johnson, pointed out, you know, he said, "Big projects are complicated, really big projects are really complicated." And this is a really big project, so it's a 19-mile stretch of the 405 that has involved a lot of property takings, a lot of logistics. And one interesting factor I'll point out is that, you know, Orange County is sort of laid out on a north-south-east-west grid, so if you look at the streets, they're all kind of parallel and perpendicular, but the 405, the major freeway diagonals through, which means every single intersection has two over crossings, not one. So there's actually 18 bridges that need to be demolished, rebuilt, widened, whatever, along that stretch. It's staggering. And with that, I've dragged our city manager, Scott Stiles, this, I think, Saturday evening at midnight, we get to go wear a hard hat and stand out on the 405 freeway and watch the Bouchard Bridge get demolished, which will be kind of a hoot to go check it out. So OCTA has already done several of those in the past, and there's, I think, 18 of them across the whole line. So the 405 actually has to be completely closed while they do these bridge things, and that's like, they've called it Carmageddon, you know, in the past, like you shut down the 405 freeway and then hope to clean it all up and reopen it before the morning traffic comes back in the next day. So anyways, but that all, we'll adjourn the meeting for the next time. Thanks.